Yes, yes. How? I saw case a little bit.
One delay on that. Charade delay on that. One charade delay on that.
Charade delay on that?
Five minutes. Five minutes on the delay.
You can do it. Then the other on that? Live on?
Sir, you mean the Chinese.
Yeah, very good evening my dear friends. Good to see you all. Well, this is Shivateja here, a qualified charade accountant and a cost accountant. Well, I am here with you guys to spend some amazing time with you on discussion about some wonderful area which we all know that is none other than GST that is goods and services tax. And there is one apprehension which students keep thinking that it is goods and service tax. Let me first tell you and clarify my dear friends, it is goods and services tax. One such wonderful area where there is a terrific scope of work and terrific practical importance at the same time very much amount of examination importance for both IPCC as well as final students. And let me make it very, very clear my dear friends. When it comes to IPCC students as well as final students, for both of them GST is applicable. There is no old act which is applicable. Of course, for final students, there is GST also, at the same time customs act also. That is, for final students, there is GST for seventy-five marks and customs for twenty-five marks. But for IPCC students, fifty marks is associated in the direct tax part and other fifty marks which was earlier service tax, VAT, customs and all is now completely replaced with GST. And in terms of new syllabus students, that is CA intermediate, for you people, it is sixty marks direct taxes and forty marks is for GST. And for of course old syllabus, it is fifty marks direct tax, fifty marks GST and CFR students seventy-five marks GST and twenty-five marks customs. In light of all these parameters, the straight concept is very, very clear that the topics of GST for IPCC and final are very much similar. Of course, there are some very much more interesting topics at CFN level and more number of topics at CFN level, but some lovely topics are there which are common for IPCC as well as final. Topics like registration, topics like valuation, topics like time of supply. These are all very, very common something topic like tax invoice debit note, credit note. These topics are common for both IPCC as well as final students. But when it comes specifically for CFN students, there are some more special and wonderful topics like place of supply and some more interesting areas like refunds and some areas like advance ruling, some areas like penalties and prosecution, some miscellaneous provision and one more great area called transitional provisions. That is what is going to happen and how wonderfully and how smoothly we have shifted from our old laws to GST laws. And what is that forms we have filed and what is that we have done exactly when we shifted from old law to GST? And we all know my dear friends, something really wonderful that GST is such a quite new law which is a newborn baby, not even one year for the baby to start it off. It started off on first of July two thousand seventeen, which is so wonderful and so fantastic, which replaced all the old taxes with a great slogan of one nation, one tax. Such a lovely wonderful aptitess which has some terrific points and some beautiful points where ICA has some good cream of questions what they can make and lovely questions what they can ask. And I keep getting lot of question on the students many a times. Sir, first term we are writing GST in the exam, how is it gonna be? What is it gonna be? What kind of questions are gonna come in the exam? What kind of pattern it is gonna be? And at the same time, how is ICA gonna ask? And when student call me and ask, sir, at CFN students will they ask multiple choice questions? How is that they are gonna ask in the exam? And what kinds of questions can come up? And how do we answer the questions? And everything looks so small, small, small. If you write that small answer, will that small answer be sufficient for us to score the marks? So like this, there are so many apprehensions among the students as to how do we tackle and answer the GST in the exam? Well, friends, Shivateja is here with all the answers for your questions what you have. Feel free to drop all the questions what you have, just keep commenting your questions. I am here to answer all your queries and till the time all your queries are done, I am not going to leave this place. I will answer all your queries, discuss everything with you and keep posting all your queries and comments whatever you have. But of course, at the same time, I will discuss some lot of wonderful and lovely topics with you. So for that reason, when I am discussing some topic, I will complete that topic first and then when I get back to the comments, let's discuss, keep asking that comments and your queries. Then again I will get back to subject and again we will get back to the comments. We will keep flipping between both of them so that we will not miss the subject in between. So let's do that effectively and do it wonderfully. Yeah, thank you. So friends, moving on. When I talk about this GST goods and services tax, we have areas like the basic concepts. We have areas like charge of GST which is dealt by your lovely section called Section Nine of CGST Act and of course Section Five of IGST Act. And we also have some lovely topic called composition scheme. And we have five wonderful areas in your GST that is your valuation, time of supply, place of supply, time of supply, place of supply, valuation, registration and also topic like input tax credit. These five areas are such a wonderful crux of GST law that is your, I repeat again, your valuation, your input tax credit, time of supply, place of supply and registration. These five topics are so wonderful areas where there is gonna be some terrific importance and focus in the exam also. And if you have seen the RTP also, even in your revision test paper also, there are some good questions on this particular topic which have come up in the exam. So that clearly indicates that in the longer run, when I go to write the exam very soon, in next month, there is definitely be a good number of question on this particular areas. And of course, at IPCC level, the level of coverage is less and CFN level, the level of coverage is high in terms of the level of topic and in terms also in terms of number of topics, yeah? So let's move on and go topic wise and discuss some wonderful areas in every topic and I will also highlight to you what are the important areas where focus should be and in what way the questions can come in the exam and how do we need to answer that so that we can have some effective discussion over here, yeah? And hi to everybody who have commented. Hi, good to see you all, you comments. Hi guys, hi friends, everyone. Please keep commenting any of your queries what you have. I will be happy to answer all of your queries, including the exam pattern and the presentation too, yeah? Right, thank you. So friends, moving on to the first discussion guys. When I talk about this GST guys, we all know that GST stands for goods and services tax. And first of all, the basic important parameter of what we all need to know is that there are the most important essence of GST law lies in that one word called supply. See, earlier it was so very common for all of us to say that when we talk about goods, we always used to tell sale of goods and services we used to tell providing services. But under GST law, there is nothing for sale of goods, nothing for providing service. The only one word is called supply which is defined by Section Seven of CGST Act. Which section guys? Section Seven of CGST Act defines exactly what does this word supply means. And some crazy point and important point what you all need to get answer, get some very good clarity under GST law is something like this. See, we always have a point of thought process that, see for example, I have a head office and a person also has a branch office. We always have a thought process that head office and branch both are one and the same. It's just only an extension of our undertaking where there is no separate entity as such. But under GST law, the perception is altogether different and the way it transits totally, totally different. When I say the way is totally different, what is that I really want to tell you guys is something like this. See, under GST law, we are all, we are required to take registration under GST. Every businessman is required to get registered under GST and required to pay GST if the aggregate turnover exceeds something known as twenty lakhs. I repeat again, if the aggregate turnover exceeds twenty lakhs, registration is mandatory. And if there is, if there is a taxable turnover in special category states, in what states? Special category states, the registration is required if the aggregate turnover exceeds ten lakhs. It's not twenty lakhs, it will be ten lakhs. But let's get some good clarity on this point that is very clear that registration is required only if the aggregate turnover is more than twenty lakhs in normal states and in special category states, the limit is ten lakhs. And special category state basically covers the northeastern states like Assam, Manipur, Meghalaya, Mizoram, Nagaland, Coima. All these kind of places are basically covered in your special category states. And Himachal Pradesh also comes in this category. And when I say this limit of twenty lakhs, ten lakhs, the first basic fundamental point we need to get is that registration is required only when the aggregate turnover exceeds twenty lakhs. This word aggregate turnover is such an important word which we need to get because this word aggregate turnover is defined by a section called Section Two Six. Two Six of CGST Act defines what is exactly this word called aggregate turnover means. Where they clearly say that aggregate turnover covers both taxable supplies as well as exempt supplies as well as interstate supplies, even the exports also covered there. But one some crazy point we need to get is that exempt supply is covered by and defined by Section Two Forty-seven which says that exempt supply also covers non-taxable supply. And non-taxable supply is defined by Section Two Seventy-eight which says non-taxable supply also covers supplies which are not covered in GST law. And I am sure most of us who are watching this video and there anywhere, you guys know very clearly that GST is applicable on supply of all goods and services except supply of your alcoholic liquor for human consumption. Except that GST is applicable on every product and every service except for alcohol liquor for human consumption. So with that reason, that's very clear that alcohol is not covered in GST so far. So now, take situation like this, imagine a question like this. That is, a person is operating in Telangana also. Telangana state for a second, the second example that he is operating in Telangana state and also operating in, let's say, let's say for a second, he is operating in Telangana state, also operating in Sikkim state. In Telangana he has a hotel, Sikkim also has a hotel. Telangana taxable turnover is about fourteen lakh rupees. Fourteen lakhs, I repeat again, Telangana taxable turnover is about fourteen lakhs. And in Sikkim, there is a turnover of alcohol of four lakh rupees. Effectively, aggregate turnover is turning out to be fourteen plus four, that's what eighteen lakhs. Our mindset very clearly says to it that the moment it is eighteen lakhs, my dear friend, let's answer in the exam and just write that eighteen lakhs registration is required because aggregate turnover has crossed ten lakhs because we have operations in special category state that is Sikkim. But absolutely my dear friends, the answer is wrong because of the fact aggregate turnover covers, exactly, aggregate turnover covers taxable supply, exempt supply, even non-taxable supply. But if that aggregate turnover is more than twenty lakhs, registration is required. But if you recall what I told two minutes back, in case of special category states, if there is a taxable turnover, then registration is required if turnover is more than ten lakhs. But if there is no taxable turnover in special category states, then limit is not gonna be ten, limit is still gonna be twenty lakhs. So going back to my example which I told two minutes back, that is about your fourteen lakhs of turnover in Telangana state, four lakhs of turnover in our Sikkim state, in that case, registration is not required because we have not crossed twenty lakhs. So this is only a sample of what kind of questions can come in the exam. This looks so simple to understand, you know? In the exam, when you start looking at the question, our mindset so easily says, alright, come on, you are eighteen lakhs, limit is crossed, let's write in the exam that registration required. But the fact is that registration not required because there is no taxable turnover in Sikkim state. So my dear friends, so these kind of small, small areas are there where we tend to slip down in the exam and answer something differently where we tend to lose marks. So this looks like a very small thing, but just imagine the similar things comes in the exam and you are answering it differently, it makes a difference because I keep saying to the students every time that every answer what you write will make a difference in your mark. And it's not one mark, it's your six months which make a difference in your life. So every mark is so very important my dear friends, just make sure that these small, small areas which are there, you have to be very, very clear and careful, yeah? So that's what your registration topic where you need to be very focused on about that twenty lakhs and ten lakhs parameter. At the same time, actually most of us know here about the concept of distinct persons and all. There is a word called distinct person which is so unique in GST law which says that just GST registration is required to be taken in every state and GST registration is on PAN based. GST number is based on PAN, we always say based on PAN because GST code is a fifteen digit alphanumeric code wherein the first two are numbers which represents state code. For example, Telangana has thirty-six, Alpadesha has thirty-seven, Kerala has thirty-two, that is every state has a don't try to remember the state codes guys, come on, they are all writing exam of Institute of Charade Accountants of India. Come on, don't try to remember the state codes as such. But we need to know the sequence and pattern how GST number looks. Wherein, the first two digits, the first two numbers basically represent the state code and next ten are your PAN, then we have number one or number two or number three depends upon number of registration you take in a state. And then the next one is a Z which is directly fixed, which is directly fixed. And last two are a check digit which could be a number or it could be an alphabet. So effectively, it is a fifteen digit alphanumeric code. Generally, every person has only one PAN, of course, it's only one PAN is mandatory, you can't have more than one PAN also. That's very clear because direct tax law clearly says that you can't have more than one PAN. Exactly, so direct tax law clearly says that you should not have more than one PAN. Statement, as per one thirty day of income tax, I, we should have only one PAN, you can't have more than one PAN as such. So with that reason, my dear friends, when you have one single PAN, but interesting part of GST is you can have more than one GST number with one PAN itself. Based on some concept known as business verticals. What is this word business vertical basically mean? See, take an example like this, Shivateja is basically into one business of, let us say for a second, trading in automobiles. And I start one more business, trading in textiles. So trading in textiles is a altogether different business compared to trading in automobiles. So I started a second set of business, for that, I can start doing business with a different GST number. Even though GST number is different, my PAN remains stagnant because my ten numbers after my two digits are of course PAN which remains stagnant. But that next number which I told one will then now become two as such. But PAN number is stagnant, PAN number is of course stagnant because it's all based on your PAN. But tell me my dear friends, even though my PAN number is stagnant because my GST numbers are different and because those two are business verticals, they are treated as distinct persons under GST law. And the moment I say distinct persons, some great point you need to get is that distinct person does not just cover this concept, for example, there is a Karachi Bakery, Karachi Bakery in Hyderabad. Karachi Bakery Hyderabad decided to open a branch in Bangalore. Karachi Bakery Bangalore and open a branch in Bangalore. Now tell me guys, when they open Karachi Bakery in Bangalore, they need to take one more registration of GST in Karnataka. Because GST registration is state based registration and required to take statewide registration. And when they require to take statewide registration, you have a registration in Telangana, you have a registration also in Karnataka. But PAN number is of course the same. PAN number is of course the same, but even though your PAN number is same, both are deemed to be distinct persons. And what does this difference makes when I say they are distinct persons? The difference where it comes is something like this, where there is a statement in our CGST Act, there is one scheduled one and also dealt by your Section Seven One C which clearly says that activities or transactions which are regarded as supply even though there is no consideration. Generally, we always say it is supply when there is some consideration in the transaction involved. But there are some transaction where it's regarded as supply even though there is no consideration. So even though there is no consideration, still I call it as a supply. So with that reason, take an example like this that there is a supply of biscuits, I repeat again. There is supply of biscuits from Hyderabad to Bangalore, that is Hyderabad Karachi Bakery has supplied biscuits from Hyderabad Karachi Bakery to Bangalore Karachi Bakery. Both of them bear two different GST numbers. When both of them bear two different GST numbers and even though there is no consideration charged, I repeat again, even though there is no consideration charged, still it is regarded as supply. So these are the effective areas where it makes a difference in terms of what exactly supply made and what exactly it makes in terms of registration and all, yeah? And let's break the concept for two minutes and let me get back to the lovely questions what our students are asking and let me look at the questions what our students have asked, yeah? Just a second guys. Yeah, good to see a lot of number of students participating in the discussions guys. Feel free to ask any of your questions, let's keep answering them, yeah? Thank you. Well, we have good evening message from so many students. Good evening guys, very good evening, very good evening. And some of them are asking for important topics. Hi Shavan, I am here to discuss important topics with you guys. And of course, as I told you already, there are five, six crux areas in your, basically five, six crux areas in your GST law like your supply, value of supply and also place of supply, registration and input tax credit. But of course, Shavan, if you are an IPCC student, place of supply is not there for your syllabus and even in your valuation also, your valuation rules like your rule twenty-seven to thirty-five is not there in your syllabus. CFR level has a concept known as valuation rules where they need to learn about valuation rules about money changing, air travel agent, life insurance, there are some very good valuation rules which you need to learn in CFR eleven. But IPCC there is no valuation rule my dear friend. So Shavan, if you are an IPCC student, you can just leave that valuation part for your understanding and learning. But of course, you need to learn your Section Fifteen valuation which is very, very important where you have concept like in valuation, what you need to add and what you need to reduce, something like your, you need to add your anything which supplier incurs on behalf of the recipient, anything charged by the supplier, at the same time you also include whatever supplier has collected, any taxes, duties, other than the GST taxes. We also add subsidies what we get other than subsidy from central government and state government. These are all the additions what you do to our value of supply. At the same time, we also reduce something from value of supply, that is only one thing which is dealt by Section Fifteen Three, that is your discount. But there are two types of discount my dear friend, Shavan, that is one discount which is given in the invoice itself. Other kind of discount is what is given after supply is done. But there is agreement at the time when supply is being done. It's something like, you know, I'll send some goods to you and we have an arrangement and agreement wherein I tell you that tomorrow if the agreement is fulfilled on the stock what I have sent you now, I'll give you discount at subsequent date. This discount can also be reduced, that is discount given after supply is done. But a condition is very clear that agreement should be there at the time when supply is done. If that is dealt my dear friend, then you can happily reduce your discount from this valuation of supply, happily you can do that. But valuation rules are not there for your syllabus my dear friend, if you are IPCC student and Shavan of course if you are a CFR student, you need to do that very clearly, yeah? Thank you. Hi Amir, how are you? Very good evening. Hi lovely, one more question from Badiraj. How to get accurate with strong fundamental laws of GST? My dear friend, Madiraj, as I told you sometime back, that the focus and essence of GST law lies in something like how government has streamlined this GST in terms of bringing GST into light and how they have framed this concept of IGST and interstate supply, interstate supply. Where in interstate supply, we charge something called CGSTI and SGST. Interstate supply, we charge something called IGST. But it's very, very important and informative and also imperative to get a clarity as to what is interstate supply and what is interstate supply. I feel so sad when a student come back to me and tell, sir, supplier is in a different place, recipient is in a different place, it is called interstate supply. If both are in same place, it is called interstate supply, different place it is called interstate supply. My dear friend, I am so sorry to tell you but that's a wrong answer my dear friends. As per our rules of our IGST Act, interstate supply clearly refers to where a place, if the location of supplier and place of supply both are in a different state, we call it as interstate supply. And if location of supplier and place of supply both are in same state, we call it as interstate supply. And interstate supply, of course, we charge CGST, SGST and interstate supply, we charge IGST. And I am sure my dear friend, Madiraj, you have, you are, I am sure you that you guys are clear with this concept, what you need to know about our utilization of the credits, that's your input IGST can be used for output IGST, CGST, SGST and input CGST can be used for output CGST and IGST. And input SGST can be used for input SGST and output, input SGST can use for output SGST and output IGST. But we can't use SG for CG, we can't use CG for SG. That cross relation is not allowed in GST laws, that's very, very important point which you need to focus upon. This looks like a small thing but really, really important guys because that's so very important. A question can come up in the exam, how can the question come for two marks? Take an example like this. Mister X has a balance of ten lakh rupees under IGST in electronic cash ledger. I repeat again, Mister X has a balance of ten lakh rupees in electronic cash ledger. Can he use it for CGST? What our mind automatically says, alright man IGST come on, use it for IGST, then for CGST, then for SGST. It's so simple and so wonderful to say, but the answer is wrong. For a spot reason because if you clearly observe my question what I ask, I told the balance is in electronic cash ledger. I never told the balance is in credit ledger, that's really, really important. If there is a balance of input IGST, when I say input, I am referring to what? Credit, if it's a credit, use it for IG, CG, SG. But if that balance is in electronic cash ledger, we are going to use only for that particular specific purpose but not for anything else. So these are some wonderful lovely basics what you need to get. And Madiraj, to complete your question further, my dear friend, you need to equip yourself with more fundamental laws about GST. We have some lovely books released by ICA where you need to look at it. And if you are asking from a practical standpoint, I always recommend you to guide you to go through our practical ICA website, look at all notifications, circles, everything. And if really looking from an examiner's standpoint, you can always refer to your materials, modules given by your faculties. At the same time, look at your ICA book and of course, any time available too. At the end of the session, I will comment my melody also, you can feel free to drop any message what you have so that I can clarify any of your doubts what you have, yeah? Thank you so much, Badiraj. Next, moving on, next we have a question from Shivanan, that is, how to prioritize the topics the day before the exam? Shivanan, as I told you already, we have some six, seven important topics which are really, really important where the focus is gonna be very, very high, that's your time of supply, player supply, value of supply, registration and input tax credit. These five are very, very important areas, so do that really effectively and that will serve your purpose, thank you. And there's a question from Venky, oh yeah, I know this guy. Should we have to write and supply booklet? Venky, I am sure you know that IPCC, you are actually an IPCC student Venky. Actually, you know that ICA has changed the pattern that they have given supply papers and supply question papers that is part A and part B for direct tax, indirect tax. And if you are in old syllabus Venky, you are going to have fifty marks GST. So this fifty marks will be given in supply booklet, so make sure that you write in supply booklet and do really well Venky, all the very best. Next, moving on to next question, we have a question from Chetanya, that is, he asking question about what is difference between last term identity paper and this term GST paper? Alright my dear friend Chetanya, it's a crazy question what you are asking. Yeah, please, let me tell you Chetanya, there is a very big amount of difference in terms of what was the last term paper and this paper. The pattern is gonna be the same in terms of the type of pattern, if you are a CFR student, let me tell you that the first question comes for twenty marks and then you are going to have sixteen marks six question where you need to answer any of the five questions and sixteen fives turns out to be eighty and plus twenty marks is a hundred marks. Plus sixteen questions will have six questions and one will be given as choice to you where you can feel free to take the choice. And if you are an IPCC student, my dear friend, old syllabus you will get for fifty marks wherein the first question will be for ten marks which is a mandatory question. Then you have eight marks six question, you need to answer any five questions which is eight into five questions will be your forty marks and forty plus ten turns out to be a fifty marks. So that's how the paper pattern is gonna work. But being a new thing for GST and GST law is quite new and a lot of new things have come up and lot of things are taking shape and lot development is happening on a daily basis. What we are expecting is that eight marks question, there will be few eight marks question and also the same time, this eight marks will split into four and four or two into four. There is definitely one a split in terms of marks where there will be focus on every topic as such. On IPC level, we also have topics like tax invoice, debit note, credit note and the time limits for returns. And let me tell you my dear friends, there are some five, six important topics which I told sometime back. There is one more very important topic also known as returns where you need to know very clearly about the concept of returns, how do we do the linking process and time limits and all. After sometime, I just spent a little bit time on returns also, a very, very important area which is so very effective and important in terms of exam too, yeah? Thank you Chetanya. Still anything else, you can just feel free to post, yeah? Next, moving on, we have a question from, we have a question from Shivanan. Yeah, he is talking, yeah, last question was from Chetanya, Kalma Kuntla Chetan, that was answer for you. We have a question from Shivanan, he is asking about what is the reference material for GST? Your ICA book is fair enough my dear friend and do your book of ICA and also your faculty materials that will be very good for you, that's a good thing for you to do the exam. I think that's fair enough for you to study for the exam point of view. And then we have a question from Sai Madhuri, she is asking about how to prioritize the topics on the day before exam. As already told my dear friend Madhuri, whatever topics I just told you sometime back which are really, really important, focus and give some utmost importance for these areas because these are the crux of GST law where a very good questions are, are gonna come in the exam where you are gonna see some very good questions in the exam. So please do that really effectively, yeah? Thank you. Yeah, moving on. Then we have one more question from our friend Loita. Clearly correct, she is asking for clarity regarding topics which are deleted from GST module. A very good question Loita because this question is there for lot of students. And let me tell you Loita, if an IPCC student, I am not sure whether you are an IPCC student or final student. If an IPCC student, you will have, yeah, first let me tell you what is not there for IPCC and final both. That is something like this, your rates of GST will not be questioned in the exam. In exam, they are gonna directly give the rate in the question and ask to calculate the tax. Of course, but you need to look at the interstate, interstate supply. Intra, make sure that you do charge CGST, SGST, split in the tax rate. Interstate directly you can charge IGST, but make sure that you split your tax rates, that's always important, yeah? And one more topic also got deleted, that's about your TDS and TCS. My dear friend, please don't think about TDS of our income tax, there is something called TDS under GST also, TCS under GST also. That is such fifty-one, fifty-two, that's there in CFN eleven, these topics are also removed for That is such fifty one, fifty two O, that's there in C F N eleven. These topics are also removed for, from your syllabus. And also removed, something like this friend, which students are slightly confused. We have some lovely concept under G S T law known as reverse charge mechanism which is dealt by section nine three and section nine four. Yeah, nine three deals with those cases where it is notified R C M. Notified R C M refers to, there are some cases where supplier is not liable to pay tax, receiver is liable to pay tax. That is called as notified R C M. And also, we also have something called section nine four which talks about where supplier is unregistered and recipient is registered. If supplier is unregistered and recipient is registered, we call the transaction as U R D two, we call the transaction as U R D to R D. Even those cases of U R D to R D, nine four section will apply and reverse charge will apply. But in your nine three, where we're talking about notified R C M, we have for goods, we have for services. Whatever R C M is there for goods, that is removed from syllabus. For both I P C C also, final also, for both of them, R C M in case of goods is completely removed from your syllabus. Both for I P C as well as final. But R C M in case of service, is there a syllabus my dear friend, please don't have an apprehension and a wrong thought that nine three R C M is completely deleted. Let me clarify once again very clearly for everyone's benefit that R C M in case of goods is only deleted, but R C M because service is still present in our exam. And to summarize, I'll just take two minutes because at the time of answering the questions, I'm also discussing some good concepts. So please make yourself open and start looking at it because I love this concept of coming live with you guys because for the first time I'm live on this Facebook place and I always keep telling students that please don't be on Facebook, please always face the books. But this first time where I'm loving to be on Facebook and spend some time with you guys. So please keep your ears and eyes wide open and keep looking at the concept guys. Yeah, so when I talk about this area like reverse charge mechanism which talks about nine three, that is your notified R C M. Nine four is of course supplier unregistered and recipient registered, but nine three talks about notified R C M. When I say notified R C M, this can apply where supplier is registered, receiver is also registered, still R C M can come. That is, is called as notified R C M. This kind of notified R C M is there for goods also, services also. But in case of goods, that concept is deleted for your exam. But R C M in case of services is still there for your exam. Where we have some lovely concept like insurance agent to insurance company, recovery agent to bank. Director is giving service to a body corporate and we also have some very good lovely concept like author is giving service to a book publishing company and music musician is giving service to a music company and artist. Artist is giving service to a producer and we also have some lovely areas like government is giving service to a business entity. And of course lawyer giving service to business entity, lawyer giving service my dear friend. They didn't cover C A given to business entity but they of course covered lawyer giving service to business entity. And you also have some crazy point called sponsorship service given to a body corporate or firm. Even the sponsorship service given to a body corporate or firm is also covered reverse charge mechanism. But you need to get some very good clarity my dear friends. Take an example like this. Uh, I C I suddenly let us say I C I plan to do some cricket match and they conducted I C I cricket tournament. In an I C I cricket tournament, there are some people, if somebody interested to sponsor, please come and sponsor. Shivadeja told, sir, I'll come and sponsor. I'll make some payment for this, put my name on the award, put that, put there presented by Shivadeja. Now tell me my dear friends, who is giving service to whom basically? Please don't have a wrong thought on this. Basically, who's giving service to whom is, I C I is giving service to Shivadeja. Provider is I C I, receiver is Shivadeja. In this particular case, R C M will not come even though it is sponsorship because Shivadeja may be a business entity. But Shivadeja is not a body corporate or firm for R C M to apply. So it's very, very important that you need to get that clarity there that R C M in case of sponsorship service will come only when receiver is a body corporate or firm. So that amount of clarity is very, very important when it comes to section nine three. And nine four is unregistered to registered where R C M will come. But practically that concept got deferred and postponed, but for example point of view, there is a possibility that questions can come in the exam. But of course, we have a small exemption that is in a day from all persons, if the supplies is up to five thousand rupees from all persons in a single day, that is, if I'm registered guy, if I take from unregistered person and total twelve is up to five thousand rupees in a single day from all persons, then R C M will not apply. And nine four provision will not hit me and I will not be covered in reverse charge mechanism under section nine four. That's a lovely concept about nine four. Then moving on guys, in this flow, let me complete section nine five also, which is really, really important. Your nine five deals with something called certain notified services through e-commerce operator. E-commerce operator is liable to pay G S T. Something like this, where you have only three services. Number one, transportation of passengers by radio taxi, motor cab and all. Number two, you have a concept about hotel accommodation and number three, housekeeping services. But hotel accommodation and housekeeping services, I repeat again, hotel accommodation and housekeeping services, these two, hotel accommodation and housekeeping, these two, R C M of course nine five will come only in a case where hotel accommodation person or housekeeping person is an unregistered guy, only then e-commerce operator is liable to pay. But if hotel guy is registered, then hotel guy is required to pay G S T. Let me take a small example for this. See guys, let's say for a second, I log onto a website that is make my trip dot com and I booked a hotel. Let's say I booked a hotel in Goa and just going for a trip on Goa for relaxation after the classes are over. And I go to Goa for relaxation of classes, when I'm going for a Goa, I booked a room in Goa to make my trip up. And the hotel guy is providing a room to room service to me. Now guys, if the hotel guy is a registered guy. I repeat again, hotel guy is a registered guy. In that case, who is required to pay G S T is the hotel guy. But by any chance, if the hotel guy is unregistered, then the person liable to pay G S T is not the hotel guy but the e-commerce operator that is none other than your make my trip dot com. So basically, they are going to catch hold of this e-commerce operator who's going to be caught in terms of payment of tax. But I'm sure most of us know very clearly that e-commerce operators do not have physical presence in India many a times. So what they told is that, my dear e-commerce operator, if you don't have a physical presence in India, we'll make your representative in India liable to pay tax. But by any chance, if you don't have a representative, please appoint a representative and make him liable to pay tax. There is something really wonderful about your section nine which talks about levy of G S T. So let me move on to some more questions which have popped up from lot of our friends. I'll keep answering them and get back to some more concepts. Thank you. Well, we just answered our question. Yeah, just a second guys, I'm here with you guys, two minutes. So Farindra is asking about I P S exam, my dear friend Farindra, I'll keep answering about I P S and final both, both will go in the momentum. Then we, we have a question from Pooja, she's asking about, please explain about utilization of input tax credit procedure. My dear friend Pooja, as I told you two minutes back, we have something called input I G S T, input C G S T, input S G S T. If you have input I G S T, we'll use it for output I G S T, out next for output C G S T, then output S G S T. But if you have input C G S T, we'll use it for output C G S T and output I G S T. But input S G S T will use it for output S G S T and output I G S T. But we can cross utilize C G and S G, S G and C G. That's a very important concept. And I'm sure you're asking a question about input tax credit only but not about the balance in electronic cash ledger. As I told sometime back, if you have balance in electronic cash ledger, we have to use only for that particular purpose but not anything other than that. Thank you so much. Then, next we have a question from Bharat. He's asking about, sir, explain about whether takeaway supplies is service or good. A very good question, Bharat, I'm sure he's asking about something with related practicality about, asking a question about whether takeaway is service or goods. See, prior to G S T also, even in service tax, this was most litigative area, whether in terms of goods or services. And we all know that when you go to restaurant, prior to G S T, they used to charge something like this. Prior to G S T, when you used to go to hotel, those guys used to charge something called VAT because there was goods involved. And they also charged service tax because service tax department told there is service, so they started charging both service tax also, VAT also, both they have charged prior to G S T. But under G S T regime, restaurant and catering transactions are deemed to be service. It is very much clarified. Because of a small reason that we have a lovely section called section seven, one, D. Which talks about schedule two where they clearly clarified about what are the transaction regarded as supply of goods? What are the transaction regarded as supply of services? In what are the transaction regarded as supply of services, two wonderful things we have told is that one is about works contract. One more thing is about restaurant and catering service. These two they clarified it is deemed to be service and G S T will be charged accordingly. And I always, we always take a stand that even takeaway falls in the same category and G S T is being charged at the same rate which is being charged in the restaurant itself. Thank you. Then, we have a question from Sai Madhuri. Yes, my dear friend, your question is, sir, please explain the meaning of this with an example. Service provided or gratuitous provided by way of transportation of goods from a place outside India up to stay custom station of clearance in India. Yeah, by a person located in not taxable territory to a person located in not taxable, to a person located in not taxable territory. Well, basically, I'm sure you are, you're asking a question about your exemption list. Well, Madhuri, let me clarify you very clearly that when we talk about service by the way of transportation of goods from, by a vessel, from a place outside India up to custom station of clearance in India. That's very, very clearly important aspect which is covered in our exemption list where it clearly says that, see, let's say for a second. Shivadeja is giving service to Madhuri. Madhuri wants to get some goods from outside India. So basically, we all know that this G S T law applies to whole of India and including Germany, Kashmir. And India is also defined by G S T law by section two fifty six where they clearly says that India covers territory, territorial waters, continental shell, exclusive economic zone, soil under the water, airspace about territory and territorial waters. So India definition is so very wide, so very wide. So anything which is being done in India will attract G S T law. So for that reason, they also have some exemption list where they clearly told what are exempt from G S T perspective. Where they clearly told, let's say for a second, you are outside India, I'm also outside India and I'm giving service to you for bringing goods from outside India to India. They are clearly clarified that this kind of transaction will be exempt and they are going to not, they are not going to charge any G S T on this transaction. It's basically a privilege given for bringing goods from outside India till custom station in India. And when I say custom station, there could be a land custom station when you're bringing by land or it could be airport when you're bringing by air or if it's through ship, it will definitely be the customs port. Yeah, so that's the answer for your question, which is asking about service provided or gratuitous provided by way of transportation of goods from a, by a vessel from a place outside India up to custom station of clearance in India. Thank you so much. Then. Next, we have a question from Lovely. She's asking about, sir, it is mandatory to read thirty one, different rates of C G S T without interest and supply of services. Well, as I clarified already, it's not required to learn the rate of tax for services. And I C I has clearly clarified in their notification telling very clearly that a student is not required to remember the rates. Rates are not required to remember, they are given in the exam because they want us to more learn more of technical terms than remember the rates of tax. So they want, they want us to focus more on the practicality and the concepts involved over there rather than learn the rates for your exam. So please focus and spend some really good time on your learning of the concepts and do some really great learning. All the very best, Lovely. Next, moving on. We have a question from our friend Kiran Kaka, a lovely name my dear friend. Your question which says that, sir, what are the important negative list? My dear friend, negative list concept was there in service tax and if you're asking a question of negative list where if you're asking about negative list under G S T law, G S T law does not have any negative list as such. But of course, we have something called schedule three where they clearly told a transaction which is neither regarded as supply of goods nor regarded as supply of service. I repeat again, it has given some transactions which are neither regarded as supply of goods nor regarded as supply of service. If it is not a good, it's not a service, then what is it? It is not a supply only. It is there only six transactions my dear friends, where we have a first point like service by, we have a point one like service by employee to employer in the course of employment and services of funeral, burial, crematory, mortuary, including transportation of deceased. We are serviced by MPs, MLAs, we are serviced by court or tribunal. We have concept like actionable claims other than betting, gambling, lottery. We also have something called sale of land and building but other than construction services. If I sell a land or a building, we will not tax it, but construction service will definitely be taxable. This own negative list, what we have like six points where it's neither regarded as supply of goods nor regarded as supply of services which is dealt by your section seven two A, related to our schedule three. You just want to look back, you can look back to schedule three and get your answer. Still in doubt, get back my dear friend, we are there to answer you. Yeah, and my dear friends, let me tell everybody who are there with us online, any queries you have even after our program is done, feel free to comment. We'll be happy to answer your queries and are available for sure guys. We're always there for your support. Yeah, this is all for you guys, so feel free to post your queries. And Kiran, I'm sure you got your answer. And if you have a question about exemption list, we have exempt list for goods as well as services. For goods is not present in our syllabus, but for services, we have a plethora of list of services which are all exempt. And we have some seventy to eighty points which are all there for your exam and you need to study all those exemption list. And of course, don't take effort to remember all those seventy, eighty points come on, that's too much of discussion and learning. But what you do is make sure that you read those eighty points to twice, thrice, so that you have an idea in the exam. And in exam, questions will come where they might ask some four points and ask whether it is exempt or taxable, one way of asking question. One more way of asking is, in an eight marks question, there could be one, two points where they will ask whether it is exempt or taxable. Something like services by R B A, when something like hotel accommodation of thousand rupees or less or services of performing artist in folk or classical art forms of music where the amount charged is not more than banana flag. More than banana flag of course taxable. And if less than banana flag was also taxable, in case where your service has a brand ambassador, these also taxable. So like this, we have some crazy points like hospital service, we have service of public libraries, service of public washrooms. We have some so many great points where there's slaughtering of animals, killing animals for food. So so many things are there in the exemption list which you need to learn. So do that, do that clearly Kiran, which you are the very best, do really well. Yeah, next. We have a question from Priyanka. She has a question about, sir, please clarify the aggregate turnover eligible for composition scheme. A very good question, I was expecting this question too. Well, Priyanka, for answering your question about aggregate of a composition scheme. Composition D scheme is first of all dealt by your section ten. Section ten clearly talks about composition scheme where they clearly clarified for your May two thousand eighteen exam. I repeat once again for the benefit of all our friends, for May two thousand eighteen exam, the turnover limit for composition scheme is one crore. If the aggregate turnover during preceding financial year, I repeat one more time. If the aggregate turnover during preceding financial year does not exceed one crore, then current year you can go for composition scheme. Provided currently you don't cross one crore. By the current year, the day you cross one crore, you are straight away out of composition scheme and you need to follow a normal scheme. And I'm sure most of us know the difference that if you are in composition scheme, you file returns on a quarterly basis, you'll also pay tax also on quarterly basis. You file return in G S T R four, that I'm sure everybody knows here. And for special category states, uh, the turnover limit is not one crore, turnover limit is seventy five lakhs. Generally, the turnover limit is one crore, but turnover limit for special category states is seventy five lakhs. So that's an important point, you need to make a note of it. And really, really important my dear friend, do really well. And there is a high prospect that a question will come on the composition scheme. Everybody, I'm sure we are clear with that. And let me add little bit more concept on composition scheme before I get back to next questions. Others, friends, two minutes, let me complete that concept and get back to you guys. Yeah. In this particular composition scheme my dear friends, this composition scheme is applicable for manufacturers. Number two, for traders. Number three, for restaurant and service providers. Any other service provider cannot go for composition scheme. Now let me tell you the rate of tax under composition scheme applicable for, I repeat again my dear friends. Applicable for May two thousand eighteen exam. That is manufacturers, one percent plus one percent, effectively two percent. Traders, point five percent plus point five percent, effectively one percent. Number three, service providers, that is only a restaurant. No other service providers can enter into composition scheme except restaurant guys. That is two and a plus two and a, effectively five percent. And please don't get a doubt in your mind, what if there is I G S T? I G S T cannot come because a composition scheme dealer cannot, cannot engage in interstate supply. Composition scheme dealer can buy from other state, but he can't sell to other state. And let me change my statement, he can't supply to other state, he can't supply to other state. That is very clearly, composition scheme dealer can take from other state, but he can't give it to other state. And he can't take tax from the buyers and he cannot issue a tax invoice. He has to give a document called bill of supply. That's an important thing. And the rates what I've told is applicable for May two thousand eighteen exam. And some manufacturers, even though turnover is not more than one crore, cannot go for composition scheme, something like pan masala, tobacco guys. One more thing is ice cream. I know we all love ice cream, but even though you love ice creams, you cannot go for composition scheme my dear friends. Ice cream is so wonderful, whether you say cream stone or oso stone or any stone, whatever it is, you cannot go for composition scheme. Because ice cream people, whether or not containing cocoa, that is cocoa, the chocolate thing which we love the most. Ice cream, the moment you are manufacturing of ice cream, you cannot go for composition scheme. So these are areas where question can come in exam on composition scheme which is really, really important. Yeah. I'm sure your question is answered my dear friend with regard to composition scheme. Thank you Priyanka, all the best. Then Kiran, I'm sure I already answered you about the studying of the negative list. Then we have a question from Priyanka. Hi Priyanka, I hope you're doing really well. Uh, Priyanka's question is clear, can we have a brief discussion on advance received against supply of goods? Why not? We'll do that, we're always there for you. Yeah, so let me clarify something really interesting and I'm sure she's talking about some lovely concept that's about Yeah, so let me clarify something really interesting and I'm sure she is talking about some lovely concept that's about time of supply. Time of supply is being dealt by section twelve, section thirteen, section fourteen of CGST Act. Section twelve deals with goods, thirteen deals with services. Let's talk about thirteen fourteen slightly later because our question of Priyanka is on section twelve which talks about time of supply in case of goods. When I talk about in case of goods, generally, the time of supply is date of invoice or date of payment, whichever is earlier. I repeat one more time, my dear friends, that is date of invoice or date of payment whichever is earlier. But, 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 for May two thousand eighteen exam, there is some lovely point which is applicable, which is also given as advisory update. That is if last year turnover, I repeat one more time, a very important point, kindly please focus, my dear friends. If the last year turnover does not exceed one point five crores. I repeat again, if the last year turnover does not exceed one point five crores, then your answer is not going to be date of invoice, date of whichever is earlier, the answer is directly going to be date of invoice. That means why even though payment has come before invoice, we are not going to take the payment date. We are still going to take invoice date. That is where, Priyanka, your question of what you are asking about advance received against supply of goods. So let's say Shivateja is supplying goods to you and I have got some payment in advance. Invoices given subsequently, even though payment has come, I am still not required to pay GST till the time I give invoice to you. And I am definitely required to give you invoice where there is moment of goods at the time of delivery. And if there is no moment of goods at the time of making it available, I need to give the invoice to you, that time I am definitely required to pay GST. But at the time when advance comes to me, in advance comes to me in the form of payment before the invoice, I am not required to pay GST. If and only if last year turnover of Shivateja does not exceed one and a half crore. In fact, on fifteenth November two thousand seventeen, the limit of one and a half crore is also removed. That is for everybody, the answer is date of invoice. But the fifteenth November point is not applicable for May exam because for May exam, notification still thirtieth of October. Of course, thirty first of October is applicable for exam. So for that reason, this particular point about one and a half crore is only applicable for May exam but not for November exam. For November exam, answer is directly date of invoice. But for May exam, I will repeat for the last time, Priyanka, the answer is straight simple that date of invoice, date of payment, whichever is earlier. But if last year turnover does not exceed one and a half crore, the answer is definitely going to be date of invoice. That's your answer. Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm sure Priyanka got the answer, there's a reply from Priyanka too. Thank you. Well, moving on, guys, let me get back to some more content before I get back to answering our other friends too. Well, we have some more wonderful topic known as input tax credit, which is really, really important, my dear friends. And input tax credit, we have some crazy section called section seventeen five, which is again really, really important, which talks about the items on which we can't take credit. Other words, the items which are ineligible for credit, that is also really, really important, which you need to focus upon. Something like motor vehicle on which we can't take credit. But of course, we can take credit when motor vehicle we buy for transportation of goods or motor vehicle we buy for transporting passengers, that means my business is transporting passengers or I buy a motor vehicle to sell a motor vehicle, these areas I can take credit. And we can't take credit in case of membership of a club and health and fitness center. We can't take credit when I buy some items which are given as a gift or a free sample, there also I can't take credit. And I can't take credit on the GST what I pay on life insurance and health insurance. And I also can't take credit when it comes to some lovely area like with regard to construction inputs. That means what? It's an important area, my dear friends, let me reiterate and clarify that point. Let's say Shivateja is constructing office, I just want to set up my, I am new CEO office and I am taking some inputs like cement, sand, steel and constructing my CEO office. See, actually speaking, it is CEO office, man, come on, it's a professional thing, it's a, it's absolutely my professional thing related to my business profession. I am constructing my office, but still I can't take credit. For a small reason because under seventeen five, there is something called construction inputs, what you buy on your own account, you can't take credit. But if Shivateja would have been a real estate developer, where I construct a building to sell that building, happily I can take credit. But in normal case, I really can't take credit. So that's an important point where question can come up in the exam, which you need to focus upon, something really, really important, my dear friend. Yeah, so these areas are there, which are really important with relation to cases where input tax credit cannot be taken, which is dealt by section seventeen five, which is very, very important. And my dear friends, we also have a lovely section and important section called section eighteen, which talks about something like availability of creating some special circumstance. This topic is common for both IPC and final special circumstance where we have some lovely areas like we are shifting from composition to normal or we are something like our product which was exempt has now become taxable or so far I was not registered, now only I got registered or have taken some wallet registration. We all know that unless we are registered, we can't take input tax credit. And if you are in composition scheme also, we can't take credit. But law clearly told that if you shift from composition scheme to normal scheme, you will end up paying tax on monthly basis, file returns on monthly basis. But law told, the moment you shift from composition scheme to regular scheme, they clearly told that whatever stock which you have which are there with you, either in your work in progress or in your finished goods, on all those things and also on the capital goods, happily take your credit. But on capital goods, directly don't take full credit, whatever whatever tax you have paid at the time of purchase of capital good that you take, reduce it by five percent per quarter or part thereof, balance you can happily take it as a credit. And this credit of capital goods is allowed only in two cases, that is your shifting from composition to normal or exempted would become taxable. But as a case of new registration or a case of voluntary registration, still you get a credit on the inputs. But you don't get a credit on capital goods, small areas, but really, really important, please do focus upon. Yeah, that's about your input tax credit, which is really, really important. And CFR students, please make sure that you guys also focus on your section nineteen twenty twenty one, which talks about nineteen about your job work where credit can be taken. But if you send some inputs to your job worker, make sure that we get back that within one year, capital goods we need to get back within three years. If you have not done, then whatever credit has been taken will definitely be reversed, that's an important point, which you need to make a note of, CFR students. And we also have a concept called twenty twenty one, that is about your ISD, input service distributor. Where in ISD is somebody who has a credit of tax paid on input services, which he keeps on distributing towards respective branches who is holding the same PAN number. But of course, GST number is different, that's where you keep distributing your credits, that's also allowed. But if excess credit is distributed, that will definitely be recovered, that's dealt by section twenty one. So please make sure that you guys focus a lot on input tax credit, a very wonderful and important area, my dear friends, so please do that. Yeah, so that's about your input tax credit topic, my dear friends. And then moving on, let me take two minutes of your time on discussion about one lovely area which talks about something like this, which is something so unique and wonderful about place of supply, IPC students, just close your eyes because this topic is only for CFR students. You can also hear for your understanding and learning, but for example, of you, this place of supply is only for CFR students, my dear friends. Place of supply is being dealt by your section ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen of IGST Act, of course. Wherein section ten and eleven is for goods, twelve thirty is for services. There is definitely going to be some very good importance for place of supply in the exam. And I foresee that definitely questions will come in exam for eight marks at least from place of supply, which is a really, really important topic. Please make sure that you guys do really well, where we are trying to determine what is going to be a place of supply and which state we will regard as place of supply. And it's really, really important that we determine the correct state because of a small reason that, because of a small reason that this state is going to make a difference. Because GST is a destination based consumption tax. What tax? Destination based consumption tax. Otherwise, the place where goods are consumed, that state is going to get the entire credit. I repeat again, the state where goods are consumed, that state is the state where entire credit is going to come. The state where goods are consumed will get the entire credit, not the place where goods are being sent from. That clearly signifies that if I send goods from Hyderabad to Waisa, the tax will go to Andhra Pradesh state but not to Hyderabad state. So it's a very, very important point which you need to make a note of. So that's important thing which you need to be very clear about what is place of supply. Because the wrong state will get the money, if there is a place of supply is determined, wrong. So it's very important, the place of supply is determined very right for allocation of credits. That is where I'm sure most of I guess here know that GST was debated very much, but debated by many states which are manufacturing because they are going to lose revenue. Because GST money is going to reach the state where goods and services are being consumed. For that reason, government introduced a concept called GST compensation SIS, where the money is being paid and government is starting some SIS on few products like air treated waters, motor vehicles and all. And that money is being given to the states which have lost money because of GST. So it's a very important topic, my dear CFR students, please do that really, really well, that's about your place of supply. So do that really well, my dear friends. Then moving on, guys, we have some interesting area called GST returns. That's about GSTR one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine and few returns are relevant only for IPC students. And every return is relevant for CFR student, of course, subject to the return for GSTR seven and eight, that is TDS, TCS, which is not there for your exam. GSTR one, two, three, make sure that you learn that matching concept very clearly about GSTR one auto populating in two way. GSTR two auto populating in one way, which is really, really important. And GSTR three is monthly return. And please make sure that you guys will focus on the late fee what we are required to pay. And something really important about late fee is different for annual return, different for normal return. For normal return, the late fee is different and for annual return, the late fee is different. Please make sure that you guys will focus on that, that's very, very important. Yeah, so please do that, returns topic very clear and very, very important. And for composition dealers, it's on a quarterly basis. And for normal dealers, they file GSTR one by tenth and two by fifteenth, three by twentieth as per the law. Of course, practically, things are being different because GST is still picking up and things are going in a different way. But exam, please do write the dates of ten fifteen and twenty, my dear friends. Yeah, so please do that effectively and properly. Yeah, and we also have some returns, some special returns like GSTR nine, which is annual return. GSTR nine is annual return in normal cases and GSTR nine A is annual return for composition scheme dealers which needs to be filed by thirty first of December of subsequent financial year. That means what? See, for example, seventeen eighteen return should be filed by thirty first of December two thousand eighteen, annual return. Formats are all, it's still in pipeline, which will come very soon in a detailed manner. GSTR nine format is released, but GST law also has a concept called GST audit when turnover is more than two crores. A very good area where if turnover is more than two crores, there is something called GST audit. So which our accountants are going to have some good work and we need to prepare some reconsideration statement which you need to attach with our GSTR nine and submit to the department. So it's really, really important area. So guys, let me get back to few more questions which our friends are having and let me answer that questions first before getting on to some other topic. Yeah, thank you, guys. Well, we have a question from Funny. His question is, on which areas IC has stressed more in question paper, I mean theory or practical? Funny, if you are asking a question, what will IC has stressed on? It's difficult for me to answer because ultimately it's IC. I cannot predict that properly, but I can definitely tell you which areas you need to focus upon which is important. But I can't definitely tell you what will IC ask, it's impossible. Yeah, so what you need to focus upon is very clearly. I am presuming that Funny is an IPC student, if you are an IPC student, my dear friend, for you, input tax credit is very important. Definitely a question will come, valuation is very important, a question will come for sure. And a question will come even on supply also, section seven, which is an important area. I mean I say question will come, I'm not telling it will come, there's a high prospect, questions will come for a small reason because it's unpredictable, I cannot predict exactly what is going to come. But of course, out of experience of past training of students and experience on GST and all, I can definitely tell you what kind of focus will be there in the exam. So input tax credit questions will come, valuation good questions will come, you also have good questions on tax invoice also. Where you are a spawn point of your two hundred rupees, hey, lovely point, yeah, come on Funny, let me clarify that two hundred rupees spawn what you are just now. If we do a supply to a registered person, it is mandatory that we give an invoice. But if we do a supply to a unregistered person and the value of supply is less than two hundred. I repeat one more time, if we do a supply to a unregistered guy and the value of supply is less than two hundred and such unregistered guy is not asking for an invoice, in that case, I need not give an invoice to him. I can only make a consolidated invoice at the end of the day, which is for my records. And this concept will work only in a case where I do a supply to a unregistered person and he is not asking an invoice and the value of supply is less than two hundred. But if value supply is more than two hundred, invoice is mandatory. If receiver is registered, invoice is mandatory, receiver is unregistered and is asking the invoice, still invoice is mandatory. So this can be a spot spot area where question can come. Looks pretty small but very powerful, so please be very sure on what you are writing in the exam, okay? All the very best. Then moving on, guys, we have one more question from our friend. Let me answer that, we have a question from Vishwanath. Hi Vishwanath, hope you are doing really well. You have a question, could explain about pot rules under GST? Is there difference between pot as per service tax and GST? First of all, under GST law, we don't call it as a pot rules. Because earlier prior to GST, that is service tax, we used to call it as point of taxation rules. But GST rules, we call it as time of supply. But Vishwanath, I'm sure you know that that point of taxation was only for services. And here in GST, we have something called time of supply where we have for goods also, where we have for services also. Service, very similar to what you have learnt in service tax, that is if invoice is raised within thirty days, date of invoice, date of payment, whichever is earlier. And for banking, forty five days. And if it is not raised within thirty or forty five days, it will be date of service, date of payment, whichever is earlier. These things are very similar to what you learnt in your point of taxation in service tax, so very similar point. But we also have some important point like time of supply for goods, as I told sometime back about your date of invoice, date of payment. But some special point about one and a half crore too. So that's an important areas, what need to focus upon with relation to time of supply. I'm sure your question is answered, my dear Vishwa, all the very, very best, do really well. Yeah, so that's about our question from our friends and let me get back to the questions after some time. And let's talk with you guys on one more interesting area. Yeah, so well, I have spent some time with you guys on discussion about time of supply. I spent a little bit of time on about discussion about valuation part and return parts too. And CFR students, please do focus upon the valuation part, that's about your twenty seven to thirty five rules, which is very, very important. High prospect, a question can come in the exam from valuation rules, especially the money changing part or life insurance agent part. Or a question can definitely pop up from second hand goods, which is very, very important. And one crazy concept called Oider, online information, data base access and retrieval services, a very, very important concept, do that really well. CFR students, that's not there for IPC guys, but for CFR students, the Oider and all is very, very important, so please do that really well. And next two minutes for CFR students, CFR guys, please do really focus on the miscellaneous provisions too. And spend some really good time on appeals and revisions, where we have some appeals, very good points like when we go for appeal before appellate authority or we go for appellate tribunal, where we have a concept like pre-deposits. For appellate authority, we have something called ten percent pre-deposit. Appellate tribunal, we have something called twenty percent pre-deposit. These are all small, small areas, but there will be definitely high focus in the exam, so do that really well. And CFR students, you also have a prospects that questions will come on transitional provisions, where they are definitely going to ask you about what will happen and how do we, how do we have done the smooth transition from the old law to GST law? Where whatever credits we had on the stock left out on thirtieth June, how we have taken the credit? And how do we file that tran one form and how do we take that credit? So high prospects, question will come on these areas too. So please do that really, really well and that's very, very important, my dear friend. Yeah, and CFR students, you also need to focus about something called known as refunds. And please also do something called advanced ruling, an important area. And a question can come, something called liability in special cases where we talk about something called transfer of business, amalgamation, liquidation and all. Where who is liable to pay GST when liquidation happens? How do the liquidator inform to the department? How will the department charge and collect the GST? So some important areas are there which are very, very important, so please do that really, really well. So these are the major important areas for CFR students too, which you need to focus upon. And IPC guys, your syllabus itself is short in terms of the basics, in terms of charge of GST, which I told you sometime back, in terms of section seven, supply. But do that clearly about schedule one where I told about transaction regarded as supply even though there is no consideration. And one more topic called valuation, one more topic called time of supply and do some important topic about tax invoice debit note, credit note. And let me take two minutes of your time on discussion about debit note, credit note. Debit note, credit note is totally different in GST, my dear friends. Debit note is a document given by supplier, credit note also is a document given by supplier. Credit note is given in case where the goods are returned or in case where value of supply needs to comes down. But if value of supply is increased, we give something called debit note, which is also known as a supplementary invoice. And the details of debit note should be shown in the same month written in which we have issued. But if it is credit note, you can show in the same month or can show in subsequent month. But not later than return for September month of next to financial year or date of annual return whichever is earlier. This been dealt by your section thirty four, concept of debit note and credit note, that's also a very, very important. So my dear friends, IPC students and FINAS students, you guys have some very good common topics, so do that really, really well. CFR students, you also have an extra topics and good thing is that you don't have any case laws as of now because GST is quite a new subject. So please make sure that you guys get some really, really good scores and aim for great marks. And just aim for exemption, guys, just don't aim for forty, fifty. We are all such lovely talented students, so please do aim for seventies and eighties and get some wonderful scores. And all the very, very best, my dear friends, do keep rocking. Before I close and thank you guys, they have a question from our friend Apurva, I'll clarify that and then move on. Hi sir, what is the order for credit availability? Apurva, as I told you already that credit availability, we have IGST, CGST, SIST. We utilize in a manner which is given by section forty nine five, where you use our IGST for CGST and all. But you can use that credit, but you can't cross utilize the CGST, SIST part, that's the only thing what you need to be focused But you can use that credit, but you can't cross utilize the C G S T S G S T part. That's the only thing what you need to be focused upon. But of course, I G S T is so user friendly, you can use it for I G, C G, S G. C G use for C G and I G and S G use for S G and I G, but don't use C G for S G and S G for C G. Yeah, so please be very clear about it. And for order for credit availability, if you have a credit of I G and C G also. If you have I G and C G also and output is C G, better you C G first, no? Because I G becomes more user friendly for I G, C G, S G. So if you have output C G S T, input you have I G also, C G also, anything you can use. But we prefer always to use C G because I G is more user friendly, so use C G first. Yeah, so that's an important point. Yeah. And then I'm sure you are clear, Apurva, all the very best. And we have one more question from Kishore. Let me clarify the questions first. That is by what amendment G S T came, one hundred first to one twenty first? It is actually both things, because one hundred first, one hundred first, one hundred one or one hundred first amendment act is a point where G S T has come into light. And one twenty first amendment act is a point where lot of new rules and provisions has come into light. And that they have done for a small reason because G S T requires some special constitutional amendment. Because G S T is such a tax where it is interstate supply, C G S T, S G S T will be charged. And both central and state together are taking tax. See, we always had some taxes before which center was taking, taxes before which state was taking. For the first time, we have a tax where center and state together are taking the tax. So that's a great tax which you need to understand. For that reason, constitution was required to be amended for G S T to be brought to light. So I'm sure Kishore, you are clear with this point. Yeah. Thanks so much, my dear friends. I had a lovely time with all of you guys. And you can keep posting still your queries if you have any and I'll be answering your queries for sure. I'll come back once again live with you guys on discussion about some more wonderful points. And at the same time, any queries what you have, please do comment. I'll comment back the answers for you. And my mail address is tshivateja@gmail.com. Any queries you have, you can mail it to me, I'll reply for sure. At the same time, you can stay connected to our Gorman C A page. They all are lovely, wonderful students, very aspirant in terms of learning things. So you can just connect it to them and any doubts you have, you can feel free to get back to me. I will be always happy to answer all your queries, my dear friends, and help you to reach your success. Because I'm somebody who always believed that your success is our success. Because it could be yours, but for me, it could be, it is always our success. So please do really well, work really hard, my dear friends. Thanks so much for the opportunity given and spending some lovely time with you and participating in the discussion with some lovely questions and discussion about some crazy points and different points. And I'm glad that students had different queries. And a special thanks to the entire Gorman C A team, our entire Gorman C A team of Telugu, Hindi, English, all the languages, for all your kind support of sharing everybody and reaching all for the student benefit. It's a great thing what you are doing. Thank you so very much to all my lovely, lovely students and all the friends who have been a part of this. At the same time, to also our Gorman C A team for giving this opportunity to spend time with you guys. I'll definitely come back to you guys and spend some very good time. Uh, well, I'd like to leave, but we have one more question from Jay. So let me answer that. Hi Jay, how are you? I hope you are doing really good. You have a question, what is delicately agent in agent definition? Well, you would have heard your concernment accounts, where you would have learned something called concernor, concerni. This is not about your G S T, but concernor, concerni, lot of time concerni takes up the responsibility of collection of debts from the customers. Where the concernit takes responsibility of collection of debts from customer, concernor gives some extra commission with concerni, which we call it as delicately commission. So if you are acting as an agent and the principal is there, agent is there, principal and agent, and there is supply of goods from principal to agent. There is supply of goods from principal to agent, it is regarded as supply even though there is no consideration. This is also one point which is covered in schedule one. A very good question, Jay, and I'm sure you got your answer with regard to who is a delicately agent. So whether you are delicately agent or any agent, if there is supply of goods from principal to the agent, it is regarded as supply even though there is no consideration. Because this point is covered in your schedule one, related to your section seven, one, C. Thank you so much, my dear friends, and had a great time. Thank you so much. See you all once again. Take care. Bye bye.